Good evening. At this time, we're going to call to order the work session of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, January 26, 2021, at 6 o'clock PM at the Franklin County Justice Center in Carnesville, Georgia. And we note for the record that a quorum consisting of all Commissioners is present for tonight's meeting. We want to welcome everyone and thank you for coming. At this time, we're going to ask everyone to stand and we'll begin with an invocation by Commissioner Wester. Afterwards, please remain standing and join us for the pledge. Please stand.
Father, we thank you for today, Lord. We thank you for your many blessings, Lord, and we thank you for looking over all of us in Franklin County, Father. Father, we ask that you just be with each one of us as we continue to do the business of Franklin County, Lord, and ask that your hands would just be upon us, Lord, and just bless us with your guidance and your knowledge as we take care of this business, Lord. Lord, I ask that you just continue to bless the citizens of Franklin County, look over us and protect us, Lord, and just show us your light. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, we need to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Commissioner Swills has made a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Franklin has seconded the motion. All in favor of approving tonight's meeting agenda as presented, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry 4 to 0, and the agenda for tonight's meeting is approved as presented. At this time, we're going to open the meeting for public comment. During this portion of the meeting, any member of the public may speak on any topic of concern they would like to address to the board. This is primarily a comments section and not a question and answer section. But if you have unanswered questions after you speak, we'll be glad to take your contact information and then someone can contact you in the next few days. When you come up to the podium, please start by giving your name and address to the clerk. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to make a public comment? Anyone with a public comment? Okay, hearing no public comments, we'll move over to the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the gym dedication. At this time, the board would like to consider a resolution honoring the memory of Michael Mayfield Sr. of Royston. Mr. Mayfield was a longtime coach, mentor, and referee for the Franklin County Rec Department, and the board would like to consider a proposal to name the Franklin County Recreation Gym in his honor and memory. In a moment, I'm going to ask Commissioner Wester to make a motion on this resolution. But first, I'd like to recognize members of Mr. Mayfield's family who are here tonight as our special guests. So Ms. Mayfield, Rashonda Mayfield?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have anybody that's going to come with you? Okay. Okay. This is Mr. Mayfield's daughter, Rashonda Mayfield. We appreciate you coming tonight. And we also have Spencer Reisner, who is athletic director. And Michelle, you want to introduce, Michelle?
This is Michelle Whitworth. She's one of our board members. She's also our secretary for our Recreation Commission. She's got to play a big part in doing this, too. We just want everybody to... I know I don't have to sit here and tell y'all, you know, try to convince you to vote which way. I know it's a done deal because everybody knows how much Mike meant to everybody in Franklin County, especially us. And it's the only fitting way we can pay tribute to him, to name a building that he loved so much after him.
Okay. Well, we thank you. We appreciate all of you coming tonight. And I know the whole board couldn't come, but we certainly appreciate you guys coming to support us. Mr. Mayfield poured himself into the lives of the young people of Franklin County for many years, and he left a powerful legacy which will live on in the families and young adults of Franklin County. So I think it's fitting for us to try to honor him here tonight in this way. So at this time, Mr. Wester, do you have a motion for the board?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution in honoring Michael Mayfield Sr. and putting his name on the Rocky Ford Gymnasium.
Do you want to read the...
Yes, and I can read the resolution.
Okay.
A resolution of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners approving the dedication and naming of the Rocky Ford Recreational Gym in memory of Michael Mayfield Sr. Whereas Michael Mayfield Sr. was a prominent member of the Franklin County athletic community, and whereas Mr. Mayfield served the Franklin County Recreation Department faithfully for over 20 years as a coach, referee, and mentor for young people, and whereas Mr. Mayfield left an indelible positive impact on the lives of campus users and the Franklin County community and will be forever remembered as an important figure in the lives of the families of Franklin County. And whereas the naming of a facility is an appropriate recognition for a distinguished person, and whereas it is the desire of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners, the Franklin County Recreation Department, and the Franklin County Recreation Commission to honor Mr. Mayfield's legacy by naming the Rocky Ford Recreation Department Gym in his honor and memory. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Franklin County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim that the Rocky Ford Recreation Department Gym shall be hereafter known as the Michael Mayfield Sr. Gymnasium. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners authorizes and directs the Franklin County Manager to procure and post signage on the exterior building facade and on the Rocky Ford Recreational Campus where appropriate, proclaiming as such. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners shall direct and cause a naming and dedication ceremony to be held at the Michael Mayfield Sr. Gymnasium in honor of the occasion. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners shall cause a copy of this resolution to be presented to the family of Mr. Mayfield and posted on the grounds of the Rocky Ford Recreational Campus and within the gymnasium building. And I'll hold off on my last call.
Okay.
This is passed and adopted until we vote on it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Wester. Mr. Wester's made the motion that we adopt this resolution. Is there a second to his motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say, make a few comments
Okay.
about my experience with Michael Mayfield. I consider myself very lucky to be able to have called Michael Mayfield a friend. Michael Mayfield had an impact on kids in this county for so many years, and we can't sit here and fully realize what he did in the lives of the youth of Franklin County over the last 20-plus years. He always greeted everybody with a smile. And he did the absolute toughest job there was at a recreation department. He was a referee. He was a coach. He was an umpire. Whatever it took, he did it. And he always did it with a smile. To sit here and say that I knew Michael Mayfield is an honor, but to sit here and say that he made not only an impact in my children's lives, but in my life also, I consider it a great honor to say that he was my friend. And I can say that I have never met a finer man than Michael Mayfield Sr.
Thank you, Commissioner Wester. Are there any other comments? I'm thrilled the board has this opportunity to do this. I know that it means that he meant a lot to a lot of people, and this is a way to honor him, and it, you know, it never can be enough. And I know that the family has gone through difficult times and you're in our thoughts and prayers, but we are thrilled that we can do this small thing for you. Would you like to say anything, Ms. Mayfield? Okay. You're welcome. You're very welcome. Mr. Reisner and Ms. Whitworth?
Yeah, I'll kind of piggyback on what Mr. Wester said. So I knew Mike growing up. He was a coach when I was growing up. He wasn't a referee for a safe time, but he did referee some, but he wasn't the referee as we know him now as he was. But he meant a lot to, I mean, everybody that he ever encountered. I mean, I know I posted after the passing on the Red Park Facebook page, and you wouldn't believe the folks that don't even live in this community anymore that were calling the office because they were concerned. They wanted to know, you know, was it expected? They had no idea. They haven't seen Mike in 15, 20 years, but he meant that much to them. I mean, we had somebody call from Delaware, somebody that has lived in Delaware for 20 years and knew him from recreation sports. And they, I mean, they ran off the words. They loved him so much. And that's how all of us were who dealt with Mike. I've never had, I don't consider Mike an employee of mine. He was a friend of mine. Me and him would call each other on the phone, not work-related, just talk about family, talk about, you know, religion, stuff like that. But I've never had somebody that would bend over backwards for me to help me with what I needed as much as he would. I could call him 30 minutes before a game, by the time a referee showed up, and he would find me somebody to show up within that 30 minutes, never asked for anything in return. He was just dependable. He was reliable. And he honestly was the nicest man I've ever met in my life. And I've met some great men, but there's no one's ever, I don't think ever will touch that pinnacle of Michael Mayfield. I mean, he meant that much to me. Like I said, I never considered him an employee. He's always been my friend. And that's how I always remember him, as my friend. And I think this small gesture is perfect. I can't wait till we can have the ceremony, so we have this whole family there, and we'll be able to see, you know, a small impact of how much community comes out to pay their respects because he meant that much to the whole community. Like I said, it's not just Franklin County either. He meant that much to our county community. He meant that much to the elder county community. He bent over backwards for everybody. And I've never had anybody say an ill word about Michael Mayfield. Even in games I can remember where a coach or a parent was in his ear the entire time, he would look at him, he would say something, and all of a sudden, both people were laughing. He knew how to do that. He knew how to diffuse a situation, and the way he just always carried that smile. So when people saw that smile, they knew, hey, this man is here for the community, for the children. He's not here for a paycheck. You know, he's here for the right reasons. And I hope that all of us can carry that on in our lives, no matter what it be that we do. You know, do everything you do with a smile for the right reasons. And I am eternally grateful for having met Michael Mayfield.
Thank you, Ms. Reisner. Ms. Whitworth?
I can do nothing more than just know exactly what Mr. Wester and Mr. Reisner said. I don't know anyone that knew Michael Mayfield that could ever say anything other than he was an absolute positive ray of sunshine. And during rec department stuff, or referees and coaches, and like you said, dealing with difficult people, I never knew Michael Mayfield ever made anything that was difficult to him. Everything was easygoing. He just smiled and was just a light, and that was just it. And I don't know anyone that I've never had a positive experience. So I think this small gesture we can take of as a community for Franklin County is to honor someone who poured his entire life into so many children and adults alike. It's just wonderful.
Again, and we want to thank Commissioner Wester and you guys over at the Rec Commission for making this happen and being the driving force behind it because it's an excellent thing and we needed to do it. And I'm glad that it was brought up and we were able to do it.
I do want to say thank you to Randall Gately and to Spencer and to all of the Rec Board because when I made the phone call, it wasn't, well, I don't know if we should do this. It was, all right, what do we need to do? And they put a lot of hard work into this and everything. And because of them, it's a big reason why we're able to do this.
Okay. Well, if there's no other discussion, all in favor of the motion to name the Recreation Gym in honor and memory of Mr. Mayfield, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry 4-0, and the Recreation Gym is hereby named the Michael Mayfield Sr. Gymnasium. We're going to bring this resolution down and present it to Ms. Mayfield. We have a framed copy for you. So at this time, Commissioners, if you'll come down with me.
Rashonda, you have to smile or be...
We appreciate it. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you for coming. You're welcome. Okay, the next item on tonight's agenda is the First Responders Memorial. In December, the board approved the Veterans Memorial Plaza Project. And in January, Mr. Harris proposed to the board, in addition to this project, that would add a memorial for first responders, including firefighters, law enforcement, and EMS. So Mr. Harris, do you want to talk to us about this?
Yes, I was approached about adding an element to the Veterans Memorial Plaza to honor the Franklin County public safety that have lost their life a lot of years ago. Tim White with Alton Group drew this plan up for this memorial free of charge. And as Tim has done everything for us for the Veterans Plaza free of charge. And it stayed out there, endless hours, overlooking that project from nothing. But John Phillips, our county engineer priced it out, and I sent y'all this previously, showing the material, the cost that we would take to do that, minus the installation cost. And that was an extra $4,200, which made the price $12,853 to add this element to the plaza. When we move the Veterans Memorial to the new location, this structure will be placed on a concrete pad with the sidewalks that's already there. You know, at the previous meeting, it was approved for a money amount to be spent on the project, I think $75,000 to $205,000. We're well below that as of today. We're right at $65,000 on the project. We still have to move the monument, and that's going to cost some. But even adding this portion to it, I still think we're going to be around $85,000, which is well below what we approved. And I would like for y'all to consider that at the regular board meeting for vote.
And what's the name of the man you said who designed it?
Tim White.
Tim White, okay. We want to make sure we let him know we thank him and appreciate, that we appreciate that very much.
He stayed out during this project. He's been there every day and some days all day, making sure that this project is done like he was drawn.
Is he, so does he have his own, is he with a design firm?
Alton Group, I'm pretty sure that's the name of his company, Tim Alton.
So it's in Carnesville?
Yes. And like I said, he put a lot of time and a lot of effort at no expense to the citizens, to the county. He really needs to be recognized.
We need to put that on, be sure and put that on the agenda. Once we, once everything's done, we can do that. Or if, and if we have some kind of ceremony, we can recognize him there, too. Because we appreciate that very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions, Mr. Harris, about this?
I just think this is a great idea.
I do, too.
I think we definitely need to honor the fallen who have served this county from a first responder and law enforcement aspect.
We do, and we're always going to have people like that, but we already have a list who deserve to be up there. So I think it's a great idea. We're going to consider this for a vote at next week's board meeting, so this will be on Monday. All right, the next item on tonight's agenda is the 2019 Audit Presentation. And due to the delays related to the public health crisis, COVID-19, the annual financial audit for 2019, which would end June 30, 2019, that end of that fiscal year, was delayed and the deadline extended well past what would be a normal deadline. And this audit was only recently completed by Dunkin's and Kitchen's in December of 2020. At this time, all Commissioners have been provided with a copy of this audit. So I'm going to ask Mr. Harris to give us some additional information.
I contacted Joe Kitchen with Dunkin' and Kitchen by email. I spoke to him on the phone first and asked him to send me a summary letter of the audit. And I have provided that to you, but I will read what it says. It says, "There is no information we feel would bear on the integrity of management of Franklin County. There have been no disagreements with management of Franklin County about accounting policies, audit scope, or other significant matters. There have been no communications with management and those charged with governments of Franklin County about fraud, non-compliance with laws and regulations, and internal control matters." You know, I also asked him to provide a statement of not wanting to do the audit again. He said, "The reason for the change in auditors was that we were at the end of our contract period, and with the county manager leaving, we decided to allocate our time to another project." Also emailed Mr. Kitchen again yesterday, and he sent me back that, as indicated, there were no findings or irregularities noted during the audit. We have simply grown our practice in different direction during the past three years. With the opening of our second office, we realized we have become too busy to continue all of our audit engagements. The county has a clean opinion, and there were no issues with performance of the former county manager. We appreciate the opportunity to have worked with you and wish you all the best."
Okay.
That's what he sent me back.
All right, thank, I'm sorry.
And I have provided all of you the actual complete audit binder.
Okay.
If you have any questions, just send it to me and I'll do my best to answer them.
Yes, if you do have questions, we'll send those to Mr. Harris. You can email them or you can talk to him. And if there's something he doesn't know or can't answer, right then, we can, he can always confer with Dunkin' and Kitchen's and get us a definitive answer. But the audit was clean, and there were no findings, no adverse findings associated with the audit. Do you have any questions right now? Okay, and this, otherwise, I don't believe there's any further board action. This is just a presentation of the audit. And ordinarily, this would have probably happened a year ago had not the public health crisis intervened. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 5D, the Water System GIS Mapping Proposal. Mr. Harris is going to present a proposal to map the entire Franklin County water system using GIS technology. So Mr. Harris, can you tell us about that?
County Manager John Phillips sent me a proposal to map the entire water system of Franklin County. That's including lines, meters, hydrants. These maps will enable our staff to locate valves and our lines easier through internet connection, through iPad as a computer. And it'll also, it'll just make, it'll make a digital map of our whole system. This system can be shared with our 911 center for the hydrants, fire departments, ask about closest hydrant. That information is in there now through in our MSA, but if you can pull up a map and see all of them, that'll be a lot easier to do, and also the Taxi Service Office. Mr. Phillips got two proposals, one from KCI Technologies for $85,850, and the second one from Turnip Seed Engineers for $87,500. While turnip seed is more expensive, I have more experience in utility mapping services and propose a system that's capable, compatible with Google Maps, as well as our current CI software, that are collecting the data similar and will allow us to provide updates to the maps and purchase, with the purchase of the proper field equipment. We have GIFA loans, and Mr. Phillips has also spoke to GIFA, and we can use our current GIFA loan to pay for this project. My recommendation, and Mr. Phillips's recommendation, is to go with Turnip Seed Engineers for $87,500 due to the compatibility with the equipment and the software we already have. And I would like that to be put down on the agenda for vote at the February commission.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harris. Commissioners, do you have questions that you want to ask about this? When we do this, this funding through GIFA, it's not going to displace anything else, I mean, as far as the water projects that are ongoing? Okay. Any other questions?
And it'd be a great benefit to the water department
It will.
to have this technology to map, to locate their system out here.
How long does that, does that kind of project take to map out?
I can't actually find that.
Okay.
It'll be a pretty lengthy amount of time because they'll have to, they will have to get GPS coordinates on pretty much all of the equipment that we have out, so.
Well, the good thing is, as we further extend our water lines, it's going to be continuously updated. So we'll go through that process once, and we've got it after that.
That's correct. And Mr. Phillips advised me that with the turnip seed one, that we can add to it. So as we add one, we can put the rest of the baby in our shell.
That's a big help.
That's right. That is a big help that we can do on our own.
And that's the benefit of turnip seed over the other.
That's right.
Okay, well, thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Harris, we'll consider this proposal for a vote at next week's regular board meeting, which is the February board meeting. The next item on the agenda is 5E, the False Fire Alarm Resolution. This is a proposed resolution that would authorize the county marshal to fine alarm users for excessive false alarms. Barry Thornton, who is the outgoing president of the County Fire Association, they're actually meeting tonight. So after tonight, he has said to me, he's withdrawing. So tomorrow, he may not be the president, but still, he's going to handle that for us. He said the objective is, they don't want to fine people. They just want to provide a way to reduce the incidence of those false alarms. I asked him how many there were. He said last year, there were 127. Approximately, he said, about 99% of those were from alarm companies, and approximately 100 were actually answered by responding fire departments. So that sounds like an incredible waste of time. But the fire departments, they have to respond. I mean, you can't just ignore a call until you find out for sure that it's a false alarm. So the resolution we have is similar. It's modeled on one that the city of Livonia passed a few years ago. It allows for three warnings before fines are assessed, and a user, someone who's fined, a company, can appeal to the county manager if they're fined. So there's a way to appeal, and it would only apply to false alarms in unincorporated regions of the county. So if a responding fire unit was providing backup to, say, the city of Livonia, well, the city can fine them. We wouldn't fine them in that instance because it's not in our jurisdiction. So Commissioners, do any of you have questions about this resolution?
Does it reset yearly?
Yes, yes.
So after three goes, if they get through a full year, it starts from scratch?
Right, right. It's just for each fiscal year period. So it actually, the way it's set up in that resolution, it would be from July 1st to June 30th of the following year.
And I can attest from the 911 side of multiple fire alarms at the same residence. And we have dedicated firemen in this county. But when you go to the same house, you know, five or six times in a row, on the sixth time, you know, people will come past it about, you know, whether it's just a fire alarm. Well, on that sixth time, there possibly could be a fire. Or they could be responding to the fire alarm, and there could be another structure on fire down, you know, on the other side of their district, and it delays response time there. I think that the fire alarm owners, I don't think that it'll be, I don't think it'd be that often as far as getting to the final part. I think it'll just be a way to make people understand the severity of the fire.
If a lot of them are the fire companies or the alarm companies, maybe that would say to them, let them know you're about to set off an alarm, you know, or if something's going to happen, potentially have a false alarm. What percent do you think are residential versus commercial? Do you know?
City of Livonia has a lot of commercial fire alarms and frequent commercial fire alarms. Most of the unincorporated, the county part are going to be residential.
Residential, okay.
Speaking on the side of the fire departments, it's like Mr. Harris said. I know I'm in Santa Cruz Fire Department, and for a while, we had two main addresses that we, it seemed like we were getting paged out at least once a week
Yeah.
to these addresses. And now they were at different times, not, both addresses not at the same time. But after the third, fourth time you go and it's just a false alarm, a sense of complacency sets in with the firemen because none of us are at the station. So when we, when our pager goes off or we get the text, we know we have to get to that station as quick as possible and in turn, get that truck to that location as quick as possible. possible and as safe as we can. But when you've gotten paged out at 3:00 in the morning, two or three times before, and you hear that same address, there's a sense of complacency that sets in. And I know speaking for me as a fireman, it, it does happen and you're not quite as fast to respond. But the flip side of that is that one time it is going to be a fire, you're going to have a group of firemen that are going to feel awful because they did not get in that full set that we normally would get into. And not only that, I may be wrong in this, but I know any other time we get called out to a structured fire, ELMSS is also sent. So are we tying ELMSS up, sending them on a false alarm call, leaving their station just to turn around and go back?
That's correct.
So you're tying up an ambulance also with this.
Actually, on a fire alarm or any kind of, any alarm or call for a structured fire, you're tying two fire departments because two of them were paged.
Yeah.
Two of them are calling for a structured fire. And you know, it's, 95% of the time, it's a mechanical or technical problem with the system. And you know, when you start sending a, a, a random warning, it motivates them to call ADP or whoever that's going to fix the problem.
Right. I was shocked, he, I mean, I asked him how many, you know, how many he, they actually responded to. I was surprised there were 127, but that they actually sent out only 100 of them. I mean, that just seems like, that's a lot of time in a row.
Well, we, we had one address that they did not live at. This was their vacation home. And they, needless to say, they had a small fortune tied up in either putting new locks back on their gate or a new chain back on their gate. Because we had to cut the lock and we had to cut the chain to get, get in there to verify that there was no fire. So you know, there's, there's a lot of things that come into play with it that, you know, after so many, the fire departments kind of get slow on.
Well, I think, in my opinion, I think that, that ordinance is re, is more than fair because you get three warnings before you actually have to pay a fine. So that's plenty of time to figure out, I got a problem and I need to fix it. But we will, we'll consider this resolution for a vote at next week's meeting. So read over it, and if you, if you think of other questions or issues with it, we can, we can address that then before we vote on it. Are there any other questions or comments about this?
I want to echo what Commissioner Wester said. You've been in Livonia, there's been several addresses where you have to go to all the time, and there's that one time that we all, I don't want to be complacent, but we all, it's going to be another alarm, we open the door and there's a fire in there. Then we kind of get caught with our pants down. So I think it's important to have that in place.
Okay, well, we will, we will consider that again for next week for an actual vote. The next item on tonight's agenda is executive session. During executive session, the Board can enter into closed session to discuss certain topics. Is there a motion at this time to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel?
I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel.
Thank you. Commissioner Wester has made the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I second.
Thank you. Commissioner Franklin has seconded the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry 4 to 0. At this time, the Board will enter into executive session. We don't anticipate this will take a long time, so we'd like to ask you guys to step out in the lobby and we'll come get you as soon as we're ready to go back into regular session. Okay, at this time, is there a motion for the Board to re-enter regular session?
I'll make a motion that we leave executive session and re-enter our regular session and give the chairman approval to sign the affidavit of the minutes taken during executive session where we discuss personnel.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wester. Is there a second to his motion?
I second his motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Franklin. All those in favor of the motion to re-enter regular session, authorize the chair to sign an affidavit stating the Board held executive session and discussed personnel issues only and approve the executive session minutes, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry 4 to 0, and the Board is now back in regular session. All right, the next item on the agenda are the county manager finalists. In November of last year, our former manager, Beth Thomas, tendered her resignation. And at that time, the Board released an advertisement for the position of county manager with a deadline of December the 31st, 2020. At the first of the year, the Board began to review the applications we received to determine which ones we believe were qualified for the position. We received 30 applications for county manager. Of those 30, five were applicants from Franklin County, and one of those applicants was also an employee of Franklin County. After evaluating the applications, we identified and scheduled nine candidates for interview. Of those nine, two withdrew from the process before we could actually have an interview, and one applicant failed to show up for their interview. Out of the six applicants who were actually interviewed, we were able to identify two finalists that we felt were highly qualified for the position, and we're going to release the names of those two finalists tonight. In two weeks from tonight, on February 9th, 2021, the Board will meet for a special call meeting to appoint the county manager. In the meantime, we scheduled a second, more in-depth interview with each of the two finalists prior to making a final decision. We're excited to announce these two finalists. We feel that either one of these individuals would, would be a good choice, and we're determined to make the right choice for Franklin County and pick the best one. I'm going to announce each name and give some brief background information on each candidate. Our clerk, Miss Finger, has prepared an information packet for members of the press. This contains the application materials for each finalist, as well as a summary spreadsheet that contains an overall demographic breakdown of all the applicants. I'm going to release the finalists in alphabetical order. This is not a ranked list, and we're not attempting to rank the finalists in any way. The first finalist is Bert Rosenberger. He spelled his last name R-O-S-E-N-B-E-R-G-E-R. Mr. Rosenberger currently resides in Milledgeville, Georgia. He is the Director of Wellness and Recreation at Georgia College and State University, a position he has held since 2017. He received a Bachelor of Science with a concentration in Parks and Recreation from Georgia Southern University in 2001. He received a Master of Public Administration on the City Management Track from Valdosta State University in 2011. The second finalist is Derek Turner. He spelled his last name T-U-R-N-E-R. Mr. Turner currently resides in Buford, Georgia. He is the Budget Officer of the City of Lawrenceville, Georgia, a position he's held since 2017. He has a Bachelor of Business Administration from Tennessee State University and a Master of Business Administration in Project Management from Keller Graduate School of Management. At this time, we don't have any further announcements about the manager finalists, except to note that we plan to meet in a special call meeting on Tuesday, February the 9th, to make the appointment. We will have a special call meeting this Thursday, January 28th, at 6:00 PM. And again, our clerk has more information for, for members of the press. The next item on the agenda is the manager's report. Mr. Harris, you have a report for us?
Yeah, the, it'll make fun, it'll make, what's your list of bids? And the bid opening will be February 11th at 2:00 PM at the commission office. Ruston, and Ruston is well into our audit. They will actually be in the office next week doing an onsite visit, doing interviews with some of the employees. But everything I've talked to Chris, that's going well with the audit. And also, the website that we've been working on for so long went live today, and I have it displayed across the room on the monitor there. The website team done a phenomenal job working on this website. I personally witnessed Ashley and Kayla put in a lot of time and a lot of interview to make this thing what it is today. And I will thank them personally for the job well done, and I'm encouraged if you want to go to it and navigate and see the work that they put into it.
That's all I have. Okay, thank you, Mr. Harris. Do you have any other announcements for us before we, we end with some announcements? I mentioned this before, but the Board will meet again this Thursday, January 28th, at 6:00 PM for a special call meeting. And then we also will meet on Monday, February 1st, that's next Monday, for our regular board meeting. That's the February meeting. I want to take time to thank our staff, including our clerk, Miss Finger, Miss Buffard, Miss Dodd, any others who helped, and also our attorney, Mr. Samuels, for all your help this month as we waded through these applications and scheduled interviews. We absolutely couldn't have done it without your help, and so we, we appreciate it very much. I'm sure the other Commissioners will say thank you too. And also, thank you for the hard work to put in on the website. It looks great. Commissioner Franklin, do you have any announcements?
Appreciate what everybody does in the office. I know they work hard. I tell people all the time, we're part-time, they're full-time, and so they do a great job.
Okay, Mr. Foster?
Again, thank y'all for y'all did on the website. I think it looks great, I think.
Mr. Schwellers?
Joe.
And Commissioner Wester?
Thank you to everybody for the website. I did have a chance to look through it yesterday before we went live and was, was very impressed with, with the work that you did. You can tell you put, everybody put a lot of hard work and a lot of time into it, and I think we have a top-notch website now. Thank you for that. Thank you for all of your hard work for this past month with the extra meetings and, and everything that y'all have made happen. So thank you for everything that y'all done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wester. At this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Wester. Is there a second to his motion?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Second, it's a motion, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry 4-0, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.